Let us pray. God of heaven and earth, in your word you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Look upon and visit the cities of the earth, renew the ties of mutual regard that form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Help us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression, that peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from various cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. We especially ask that you bless those who hold office in the government of this city, that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them use their authority to serve faithfully and to promote the general welfare through your son, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you pastors Michael and Oliver. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, August 3rd, 2009, to order. Will the City Clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the August 3rd, 2009, regular meeting. However, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, we do require that you complete a public comment card prior to speaking on that item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards were received by City Clerk's staff. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you'll have 30 seconds to complete your remarks. The City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to that person speaking that you would expect to receive yourself. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk?
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Tina Diaversa?
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tard?
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please silence also. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll thank everybody for being here, and as I look around the room, I feel really safe tonight. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Agenda item number 09902, approval of the meeting agenda.
Is there any items to be considered? Do I have a motion and a second?
I move to approve the meeting agenda, agenda item number 09902.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lusk, a second by Councilmember Diaversa. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Next item's a public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the City Council and to provide input and opinions on any item that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the City Clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the City Council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment, sir.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Will the City Clerk please sound the items?
Item number 09903, approval of the July 20th, 2009, regular meeting minutes. Item number two is approval of the following Platts. Number one Curtis Mills Minor Platt subdivided into two lots. Number two Hayfield subdivision final plat subdivided into 12 lots. Number three Perkins Replat combined two lots of a four lot subdivision. Number four Brayburn Phase One plat, plat only commercial portion on Birmingham Highway. Item number three, which is agenda item number 09905, approval of a contract with the gardener's roof repair for the reconstruction of the roof for the Bethwell Community House. And four, approval of a contract between the City of Milton and Amusement Masters for the Roundup.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
I move to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second it.
With a motion by Councilmember Tard, a second by Councilmember Thurman.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Mr. Mayor, if we can move our presentation to the second one, we're going to begin that with recognizing the City of Milton as a heart-ready city by the American Heart Association, and presenting that is Michael Wellington with the American Heart Association. He's the Senior Director of EMS and Senior Director of the Mission Lifeline.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having me. I am here on behalf of the Greater Southeast of Philly, the American Heart Association, and I would really like to thank you guys for your commitment to the mission of American Heart. We've truly seen a change in the lives of the citizens of Metro Atlanta through efforts like are being performed here in the City of Milton. So it has been a pleasure working with Chief Edgar and the officers and members of the Fire Department, and without them, we could not have accomplished what we did this last year, so we do appreciate that. So on behalf of the American Heart Association, we do congratulate the City of Milton on being recognized as a heart-ready city. This designation is due to the hard work and dedication of the city's leaders and their commitment to training governmental employees in CPR, hosting community CPR events, the proliferation of automated external defibrillators for public access in the community, and providing lifesaving public services at the highest level. And having said that, we would like to present the City of Milton with the 2009-2010 Heart-Ready Award.
Our public safety continues to make us proud. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Moving to item number three, it is the presentation of the final report from our ADA consultant, Ms. Marie Latta.
First want to tell you that it's been a pleasure working with you in the last nine months, and I want to especially thank the mayor and City Council for their involvement. I've worked with other local entities, and I've never had a situation where the council or the board was so accessible that you could actually call you up and talk to you and interact. So that's made our work a real pleasure, and it adds to the connectedness and the real commitment. It's not just, you know, nine months and here's a report and put it on the shelf. This report creates more work for you, but it has been a pleasure. And tonight, I'm presenting to you the final product. We talked about the administrative requirements, and one of those was a transition plan, and I'm leaving with you a notebook, it's the compliance plan, and it has basically four sections. The first section is the evaluation, and that really addresses those administrative requirements that we talked about. The second section is training, and it includes documents that we've built along the way and that you as a city can continue to use. And the third section is reports and recommendations. It's actually a compilation of the reports and reviews that we've done over time, and each of these has its own recommendations built in. So this truly is a workbook. It's not just a cut and dry, and it will take some time to digest, but you'll find in it some general broad recommendations, and then the recommendations that come in each report or review. And then the fourth section is resources, and it simply has some copies of federal documents that are important to the growth. And so we've really addressed many facets of compliance, and from the point of view that it's not just about compliance, but compliance is the foundation for the inclusion that you have committed to as a part of your mission and vision. So with the end result, it's kind of like a new beginning, and the important thing is the commitment from every individual, and as over time, as personnel change, that commitment doesn't come and go with personnel, but it's there and it's the foundation, and everybody sees it as, you know, their work and their job. And, you know, I recommend the next steps. There's work to be done, and I think the interesting part for you as a city is that it's not about going back and fixing old problems, but it's an opportunity to build, and in this building, you're going to prevent problems, which bottom line saves a lot of money. So I wish you well in continuing. I want to keep up with you, continue our relationship. So I get committed to what I'm doing and the people that I'm working with, so I want to, you know, keep up with you and hear good things. And I want to commend the Milton Disability Awareness Committee for their work and their commitment and their involvement in taking me into what they're doing and to thank them for that. And I just want to wish you well as you move forward. Now, and I'm just delivering one copy. I don't think it needs to be in every senior staff office, and if you feel the need and want it placed in, say the mayor's office or other places, it can be duplicated. But it's a handbook, it's a workbook, and I hope it will serve you well. Thank you.
And I'd like to, on behalf of myself and the Council, thank you, Marie, for all your hard work, and you've been a pleasure to work with, so thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure for me.
I think it'll make a difference in our city.
Thank you.
I'm going to move on to our first item, as I noticed we've got a little delivery in the back door, so we can skip that. On May 10th, 2009, at 5:11 PM, Milton Police Officers Nathan Allen and Andrew Phillips responded to an automobile accident with injuries on Hopeo Road. Upon their arrival, they located the vehicle, which was overturned and on fire. The officers then removed an unconscious victim from the crash site and transferred him to medical personnel. The victim that was assisted by these two officers was dangerously close to a burning vehicle, and the officers had to combat smoke and high heat, as well as the difficult terrain to rescue him. These officers performed with professionalism and courage in the face of significant personal risk to assist a citizen. As such, they are being given the department's first-ever Medal of Valor in recognition and appreciation for their fine efforts. I'd like to ask these two officers to step forward.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew how proud I was of them and how glad we were here. Nathan? And Andrew?
Both our police officers and our firemen, it's amazing the sacrifices that they give to us. They put their life on the line every day for all of our citizens and ourselves, so we're certainly thankful and grateful. Thank you very much. The City Clerk please sound the next item.
Mr. Allen, we have one item under first presentation, which is approval of an ordinance authorizing the exchange of easements on the Crab Apple Community Center property, agenda item number 09907.
No discussion.
Is there a motion?
A motion and a second.
I move to approve the first presentation, item agenda number 09907.
I'll second the motion.
A motion by Councilmember Tard, a second by Councilmember Bailey.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, there's no items on our zoning agenda, and we're unfinished business, so we're going to move on to new business. Will the City Clerk please sound the first item?
Approval of a resolution approving a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security for the Assistance to Firefighters Station Construction Grant Program sponsored by FEMA. Mr. Matt Marietta?
Good evening. This grant program came in with the Recovery and Reinvestment Act, and it's a new addition to the AFG program, which has given us a SAFRA grant and all the other grants that we've put in for the Fire Department. And specifically, this focuses on either refurbishing a dilapidated fire station or building a new one if we're trying to expand our service. Given that we have a lot of things up in the air in reference to our locations in the future and how the city's going to develop, I thought that this would best be focused on trying to address the problem that we have, the problems that we have with the station on Thompson Road, which was built in, I believe, 1978 or maybe a little bit earlier, and started off as a volunteer fire station, and has wires run together with medical tape and all sorts of tinkering that has been going on since that was put in. So this grant basically would provide the funds to rebuild that fire station or put a new fire station in its stead. I believe the total grant application was about 1.8 million. They don't ask for specific percentage contribution on the city's part. They just ask what we'd be willing to contribute. So understanding that finances are what they are, I put in that if we are awarded the grant, we would be able to contribute whatever we would be funding as a normal part of the upkeep for that fire station. That being said, it would be wonderful to have a new $1.9 million fire station on Thompson Road. A lot of these grant applications are heavily weighted in favor of severe economic depression specifically associated with layoffs and municipal layoffs and unemployment rates. And that gives me, given the size of the grant application, makes me wonder if we would actually be a strong contender for it, but if you don't ask, then they can't tell you no. So I figured this would be another good application to put in for, and maybe somebody will read it and think that we're all worthy recipients.
Is there any questions from Matt?
Is there a set amount of money they have designated for this grant, or?
I can't remember the exact amount. I know what they were talking about was receiving somewhere around 20,000 applications and funding 200 of them. So that's kind of close to going out and playing the lottery.
Are there that many fire departments in the?
Um, I would imagine.
That there's people submitting more than one application?
Uh, you can submit up to two applications, a $5 million max per agency. So we've only submitted one. But then, you know, if you consider a place like Atlanta that has stations built back in 1910 that are falling apart, my guess is that they'll probably get the heavier weight than we will, but...
Thompson Road Station looks pretty sad. It could use some...
Yes.
Okay, is there any other questions for Mayor? Go ahead, Councilmember Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. This may be more of a legal question. Is there any deed restriction? My memory seems to be that at one point that land had been donated. Am I recalling that correctly?
Correct.
With that donation, and I assume that you guys have looked at all of that, but can you just mention what that deed? I know in some other instances, we obviously have some restrictions in terms of whether or not we can demolish and replace. Can you just speak to that briefly?
Yeah, as long as it continues to serve a Fire Department function and a public safety function will follow.
Terrific, thank you. I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
If you mentioned that you had designated that particular station to be the recipient of the grant, is there a restriction once you receive the grant if you were to change your mind?
There's a potential when they look at the application and see if they feel it has merit. Like before I got the SAFRA grant, they did contact me ahead of time and ask questions about it, and, you know, if our circumstances have changed or anything since the grant was submitted, since usually it takes so long, the review process and the award process takes so long. So there is a potential if something changes drastically in our approach that, you know, we could address that at that time.
And just to comment, thank you very much for your hard work on these grants. I mean, I know there's a lot of money out there, and you just got to go get it, but your articulation and your writing skills are excellent, and I just commend you for doing this for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Lusk?
I understand the submittal deadline is the end of this month. Is that correct?
Actually, it just passed, so...
When do you anticipate a response?
It would be... I would imagine it probably won't be until sometime late this fall, especially if they get as many applications as they are predicting. So the SAFRA grant, I think I applied for that in November, December, and it took until June before that actually kicked in. So it's a good six months at least.
Do we have any public comment on that?
No public comment, sir.
Okay. There's no more council discussion. Do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, that we approve a resolution approving a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security for the Assistance to Firefighters Station Construction Grant Program sponsored by FEMA, agenda item number 0990.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Diaversa, a second by Councilmember Thurman. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is discussion on homeowner's tax relief grant funding possibilities. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, good evening. At staff reports a couple meetings ago, we talked about the homeowner's tax relief grant, and the direction that I received was to go back and look at the budget and see if there was opportunities to find roughly $260,000 in that budget and what that might look like and where we might be able to take it from and to bring a response back at this meeting. We have done that, and I want to let you know that I have found a couple of places in the MNO budget that I think a portion of it could come from, and I want to walk through that. It is going to, though, our discussion is going to move into whether or not you all have any interest in looking at the capital budget to make up the difference. There's just no way that I can get to $260,000 in the operating budget of the city without going into the capital. To kind of summarize where I've been able to find a little bit of money in this, I think is stuff that we had kind of assumed was going to happen before the end of the year. There's a little bit of money probably that we could take out of the fuel and gasoline budget, just because the prices have come down so far. We cut that in half when we did the most recent budget amendment, and the prices have remained such, yes, a couple months later, that they're still tracking low, so I think there's a little bit of money there. We have some, we have a couple of vacant positions that are in the City Manager's office, the Assistant City Manager or operations type person that was funded. Those salary and benefit dollars remain open at this point and have not been encumbered because that position's vacant. There's also a substantial... Well, I say substantial. There's some money that's available as well in the Fire Department's uniform budget line. I certainly don't want to take it all out of there, but they have been exceptionally conservative this year in only acquiring uniforms when they need to. If I look at those three particular areas of the budget, that's really the areas that there's any even contemplation of a surplus at this point. That really gets us to finding somewhere between $85,000 and $100,000. I can get to that $100,000 mark if the Council's willing to freeze their stipend use at this point. There's about $15,000 in those stipends that still remain for the last two months of the fiscal year. So the difference between the $85 and the $100,000 figure, that was just one other place I looked at that several folks had not touched, their stipend allocation. What that leaves for us is an additional, either an additional $160,000 or an additional $175,000 that we would have to look, in my opinion, to the capital budget to account for. Really, there's two line items in the capital budget that even have the dollars attached to them to be able to get to that dollar figure without having a project just completely stall. Those two items are either pavement management or land acquisition for parks are the two line items that are large enough to be decreased by either $160,000 or $175,000. I'm certainly open to your suggestions or observations or questions, but in going through the budget, that's kind of the best, the best feedback I can bring back to you, is I think a portion of it potentially could come out of maintenance and operating, but there's going to be a capital hit as well to... there's going to be a capital hit as well to, to find $260,000, if that's something that you all would like to pass along to our citizens this year. Again, just in summary, we're talking roughly $35 per resident in the city of Milton. That is not the full amount of the homeowner's tax relief grant. There is a portion that Fulton County assesses, and they have already indicated that they are not going to pass that along to the citizens. So, our citizens are going to see an increase at this point over last year that was provided by Fulton, Fulton County and us historically. So, really, all we're contemplating tonight, I just want to make sure that's very clear. We're, we're not contemplating making it a, a net zero. The county's, is not going to pass that along. What we're talking about is roughly 35, $36 per, per homeowner.
And can I clarify a couple things, Mr. City Manager? That is per household?
Correct.
It's not per citizen?
Correct.
$35?
Yes, yes. If I said that, I misstated. Per, per taxpaying parcel.
And, and then also, Mayor, could you confirm, you know, when you talk about unfilled positions and, and the budget dollars for that, at the end of the year, where does that money?
Anything at this point that is not spent will roll over to fund balance and, and could be reallocated in the next, in the next fiscal year. So, I, and, and I've, I've gotten a first snapshot and certainly don't want to give it to you as, as the gospel at this point, but I got a first snapshot this morning on revenues for our fiscal 10 budget. And we'll, we'll obviously put a budget together that can allow the city to continue to operate, but I don't want anybody to think that revenues are going to be substantially higher next year versus this year. And in fact, they are trending flat to even, even a slight decrease. So, even if you were to contemplate doing this in this fiscal year, it would be very difficult to think that it would be possible in the next fiscal year. Of course, we're certainly just in the beginning phases of the fiscal 10 budget preparation process, so probably too soon to tell. But this will be something we would have to do year to year. I have been reasonably assured that this will also not fund next year, and it would be several years if, if it funds before, before it comes back.
Okay. And I know this is a, you know, even though the dollar amount is small, it's still very important when we, we talk about taxes to our citizens and costs. So, let's see, does council have questions for Chris on this?
Do we know what any of the other, I know what, we know what Fulton County's doing. Do we know what any of the other cities around us are doing?
I believe Stacy can confirm it for me, but what our evaluation of the other North Fulton cities is that there has not been one at this point that has elected to fund it and pass it along. So, if, if we would be in the minority, which is not necessarily a bad thing, if that's the direction you'll want to go, but we would be in the minority in funding it.
Now, I understand, though, it's really the Georgia's legislature that funds it. It's just we would actually have to do a millerate rollback in order to, to account for it, because it's not really a city-funded thing. It was a credit we got back from the state who is elected not to-
That is correct. That is correct. We would, we would pass it along and then we applied to the state for reimbursement.
So, we would, so realistically, it would be a, a millerate rollback if we, if we decided to adjust their taxes by that amount. Is that correct? Or how would we do that? Because it's really the state leg, the state legislature that chose not to fund it. It's not really our-
Right. What would we probably do is just do a credit, just like, but we, what has been on the bill before, but it would just be, instead of being called an HTRG, we probably just call it a tax credit.
So, we'd do like an additional homestead? Because it's only for homesteads, correct?
Correct.
So, we'd have to do like an additional homestead exemption?
Right.
Other questions? Councilmember Bell? Can I move down? Councilmember Lust?
Can it be partially, you know, if we can get, get halfway there, is that an option or is that not an option?
Well, I think we could, if, if we're calling it something, if we're calling it a tax credit or an additional homestead exemption, yeah, it could, it could be. I don't see why it couldn't be.
Councilmember Deversis?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On the two items that you mentioned, pavement management and land acquisition, those will roll forward into the new budget since they won't be spent this year, but they would be reallocated. They would not just roll right to the same position as, as they are now. In other words, if we have 1.2 million dollars that we earmarked for acquisition, land acquisition for parks this year, and we have not spent it, not likely to within the end of our fiscal year, that would be real, reallocated, but, but not guaranteed to be for parks, park land?
It's going to carry forward into the fiscal year budget in the same line item that it's in today. So, it's going to carry over into land acquisition. The only way it could be changed would be by an amendment of the council. The council could, can amend this document at any time they want, but no, it's going to, it's not going to just go in, back into the pot to be redistributed. It's going to carry over as what it is today.
And that, that, let me explain a little bit on that. It's in the capital projects fund, and capital projects fund is typically budgeted on a, on a project length basis and not a, a fund year or calendar year, fiscal year basis.
And if we, if we do not provide this credit, that would help to offset the fact that the state is not providing the credit or the relief. What would be the communication outward? Would it be on the tax bill? Would there be communication? How would we, how would we communicate that, you know, these dollars are, are not being allocated because of these reasons and, you know, because not everyone reads the paper and-
Right.
Understands, you know?
We would have to actually include an additional letter. We can't put anything about it on the tax bill. That was written into the legislation.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Isn't that interesting?
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay. And as I understand it, you found about $85,000 in the vacant positions, the fuel and the fire department, and a possible addition of 15,000 in the stipend, and then the rest would have to come from what we had in the capital budget.
That's correct. That's the best I've been able to do.
And I don't know that you could actually legally freeze the stipends between council members without, we had to do a budget amendment for that, because I don't know how you could say something, because some people have, have spent theirs and some haven't. I think we could get into an accounting issue with that.
Well, this whole thing would have to be a budget amendment.
Yeah, but I think you could get into an accounting issue with the, when between, if council members treated differently, if some have spent it, some haven't, so.
Well, it'd probably have to be voluntary, I would think.
It would have to be, yeah.
It would. It would. That's why, that's why I presented that as a separate item as opposed to saying, you know, that, that money, as I add those figures up that remain in there, it's right at $16,000. That's something that would be completely voluntary. If you're asking from the city side what I can free up in the, in the general budget and be comfortable at this point, although every dollar is precious, I see that there's about $85,000 in there that was budgeted based on trend or either not spent because of some good conservative spending practices in the fire department.
Okay. Councilmember Tarkey, I think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the 85,000. The reason I'm a little concerned about it is because obviously with saving the fire uniforms, that's fine, and staffing with the positions not filled. I am a little concerned, though, with, with projecting on the gas and fuel. I think, you know, we can, I think we can safely say what the gas and fuel's going to be, and hopefully that's the case, but also we have to run a balanced budget. So, I'm, I mean, are we, how close are you calling that gas and fuel?
I'm not. I mean, I wouldn't have brought you a figure that I thought that we were calling close in the last two months of the year.
We're not digging our money out of the country.
No, no. If I'm, if I'm looking at it, no, if I'm looking at it at this point, we have budgeted 182,000 in fuel. We're a year-to-date spent at 75,000. There remains 107,000 in the fuel budget at this point, and my recommendation was 40,000 would be available to potentially allocate to this. So, I'm, I'm leaving way more than what I think because of the volatility in that market. You don't, you just don't know what it's going to do bill to bill with the price of oil. So, no, I haven't given you a number that, that brings us to a break-even point that I'm not comfortable living with.
Does staff have a recommendation? I mean, I know you've presented to us what the figures are, but do you have a recommendation? You guys work with the budget every day.
Um, I don't know that I do necessarily, and that, and that's just being honest, because I'll, you know, I've given you the places in the operating budget that I think I can continue to provide service today at the same level that will be tomorrow. The, really, the discussion focuses around whether or not the benefit to the city in doing something like this is worth $175,000 in less parks or less pavement. And, you know, again, we'll allocate the money the best we can, but that's, that's more of the, that's really more of the policy decision. And I hate to answer your question with a question, but I, you know, does it give me more comfort to have more money in the budget? Well, absolutely, but I'm also conscious of the fact that they're the taxpayers' dollars, so.
And Councilmember Hewitt may have asked this question, and I don't know if that was the answer or the question he has, but I'll ask it again because I didn't get the answer. Let's say that we were to go with 85,000. Can we pass that 85,000 on to citizens, period? I know that's not fully funding it, but can we pass along some savings to them?
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't see why not. That represents roughly, I guess, a third of the $260,000. So, presumably, if we were going to pass along the whole amount, it equated to about $35 per parcel, we would be passing along about $10 per parcel.
And, and the administrative cost and the paper and the ink might make up that?
They, it, it does cost almost, well, it, yeah, we, there would be some administrative costs and some associated postage, et cetera, that went along with it.
Councilmember Lust has some?
Just to clarify, we're still talking about the $35 portion that the city's covering. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. That, that is correct. We have absolutely no influence over what the county has elected to do.
So, if we were to cover this shortfall, we'd be essentially bailing out the state in its lack of, the state's failure to meet its obligation.
Well, potentially. I, I did have a conversation with Representative Jones about this particular item, who is our, our state representative, and she very candidly expressed to me that it was truly something that initially was designed as a gift from the state, and the funds that funded the gift had dried up. And that was, that was, that was basically her direction. I said, you know, what's the chance that this is going to come back next year, just trying to get some background and some history on, on this. And of course, nobody can predict the future, and I certainly wouldn't want anybody to think that I am speaking for her in predicting that future. But to look at the state's finances at this point, it is as obvious as it gets without being obvious that this is not, I, I have no indication that this is going to come back next year. But maybe that characterizes a little bit different, is that this truly was, it was a gift in the funds that funded the gift and have dried up and are just not there in these economic times.
I, I think, I feel comfortable and speak for the entire council that, that none of us want to have any additional cost for our citizens or certainly wouldn't want to raise taxes, but obviously, this is not something that we're faced with that is, is the city is trying to charge our citizens extra or whatever. It's just, as Chris had mentioned, it's, it was a gift from the state that they no longer are able to give. You know, my opinion is, and I believe most of our citizens would agree, that $35 per household, I, I know in everyone's personal, or most people's personal lives these days, businesses and, and most all municipalities, there is, you know, budget shortfalls and having to cut back. So, you know, I certainly think we would be doing what our citizens would expect us to do by not, not cutting our budget so tight, because as Chris said, we may, we may get tighter next year. Revenues are trending down and whatnot. So, even though we have some unfunded, or some unfilled positions and some dollars there, those certainly don't go to waste and they can be put in the general fund next year. I think we would do, be doing our citizens more of a service by being fiscally responsible rather than, again, it, whether we did all or partial, the $35 or if others $10, $12 or whatever, minus the cost that it would, it would cost the city to, to address those funds, probably would not do that good. So, it's my opinion that we should leave this one alone.
I do have one legal question, Mayor. Our charter specifies that the homestead exemption is set forth by the general legislature. Is that a problem for us? Can we change it without the legislature, or is that?
That, what does, what does it read?
That's, that's the relief, this is the relief grant, and that's something different that-
Well, the homestead relief, I mean, that's something, no, because the only way we could actually fund, it, it was up to the state whether or not it was funded. If, if the state chose not to fund it, we don't get a choice of whether or not we fund it. That wasn't really, I mean, it was theirs to fund or not to fund. They did not fund it. So, if we want to give the money back to them, we've got to do it back as some kind of credit or an exemption. And I, I just want to make sure legally we could even do that. We could probably do a credit, but if we do a credit, it's got to be for everyone. An exemption, the homestead exemption is set forth in our charter. Is that something that we could even change? I don't, you know, I don't know the answer to that.
And I would want to take a look at that. That's a great point, Councilmember Thurman. Good point. I would need to look at the documents in front of me.
And I think, too, if I may, Mayor, when we discussed this originally, it, it's very important, not that it makes anybody, you know, feel any better to, to lose 5, 10, or $35, or $100, but the communication is what is very important, I believe, to let citizens know exactly what this was in the past, so they're not confused about what's being now taken away from them. And two, to communicate that the likelihood of it being funded in the future is not there. And I like the way you put it as a gift from the state. You know, I wish it had been articulated that way originally from the state, because it looked like a, you know, a tax credit that was there forever, you know, and, and now that they're not funding it, it looks like a tax increase. So, as long as that communication is there, I think will be, you know, will give a little more, at least, ability to understand by the citizens.
Okay. Does, does anybody have any other questions or comments, or do I have a motion?
I mean, even-
I know.
Councilmember Bailey?
I just wanted to thank our city manager and Stacy Ingles for continuing to look at that budget. I know that it's a daily, weekly, and monthly process, and so I just would encourage us all to continue to sharpen our pencils each and every day, but I know that you guys do that, so thank you. And regardless of how we treat those funds, obviously, on a regular basis, we're looking to refine that budget. So, just thank you for that continued effort.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to move on to council reports. Are there any council reports?
Councilmember Lust? Received an email from Mr. Jim Bell with Milton Fields up on Birmingham Road. And on Saturday, the 25th of July, they had the first interment at Milton Fields. It's the only state-licensed green cemetery in the state.
Yeah. Any other council reports?
Um, I, I'd like to just make mention of something, if this is okay, Chris, that John Zabo of Fulton County is going to come to speak to us on the 17th. He's being placed on the agenda, or has been today for the 17th, to just discuss how that process for the new public library that is to be located in Milton will go, the site selection for the public library, and any other questions. So, we hope that, I hope that by making an announcement, people will come that have questions about it and give an opportunity to have those questions answered directly by him.
Now, I would like to also clarify, I know there's been some mention to citizens on giving their feedback and whatnot, and also headlinks for the library people, but as I'm looking, I notice a lot of folks are just addressing the city council. So, you know, might want to put it upon everyone to let these citizens know, thank you for copying us, but the information really needs to go to the library board, so.
Yeah, I, I forwarded a lot of emails, and I know Councilwoman Thurman said that she had as well, forwarded emails to them. I think they just, you know, misread maybe what the, what Fulton County. And two, to that point, we don't really have that much control over it. We certainly have recommendations that we can make as a, as a council in the city where it's going to be located, but the community, it's very important that the community give their feedback.
They did say that if we were willing to donate the land for it, they would be glad to put it on the city property, but I didn't think we had any additional land that we were willing-
That'd be interesting.
Available to donate.
Birmingham Park Library. I mean, people have suggested that, since there's 203 acres. I mean, again, whether or not that's the best location, probably not for us to make that decision today, but that has been, I know, a suggestion that has been brought forth in the past, and it's obviously not essentially located. But again, it might be a good thing for Mr. Zabo to be able to, you know, address in terms of their site selection, the things that they're looking for in terms of transportation access, et cetera, but-
Sure. And we'll be, look forward to getting some information on the 17th, so. Okay, is, was there anything else from council? And I'm going to move on to the city manager reports.
Sure, I've got a couple tonight for you. I'll let you know that-
Sure. I've got a couple tonight for you. I want to let you know that the space and needs analysis that we've embarked on is, is coming to an end, and we should have a deliverable for you here, at least preliminarily for you to look through, and then we'll do a more formal presentation and work session. I can tell you that at this point, we're reasonably comfortable with square foot needs, square footage needs. We're working on, the second part of this particular assessment was a programming and adjacency study, and that's what we're continuing to work on. We worked on it a little bit last week, and there was a couple of things, at least in my opinion, that needed to, to move around and be more adjacent to each other and more adjacent to the public, et cetera, et cetera. But that really is, is moving along well. The first part is done. I can tell you that it is not a study that's going to come out and be designed for any specific site. I want to say that just very clearly in the public, that this has not been a study that has contemplated that a city hall would go anywhere. This is a study that has been done that is based on square footage as well as based on adjacencies. So, look forward for information on that. Coming up, so any questions on that one before I move to the next one?
Sure.
Thank you, Chris. In terms of adjacency, does that contemplate both office adjacency, but also adjacency as a result or relates to police and fire? I know that we've had some of those dialogues as a body. So, is it both of those adjacencies?
Yeah, it, well, yes. It is, it's more specifically dealing with adjacencies amongst the different staff members here at city hall. For example, who does finance interact with the most? Who does community development interact with the most? And it's all about using those type of adjacencies to try to increase productivity and efficiency. So, I, I think in answer to your question, yes. The one thing that is terribly difficult in a city hall facility to allow for is, is a police component, other than some administrative offices. And the reason I say that is because in two thousand nine, as you're, as there's, there's different standards for building a, a public safety police facility than there is for building a city hall facility. And as much as I have spent almost my whole career in police facilities, I guess I could be the first one to sit here and tell you, it's difficult to build them where they look nice, because there's so many hardened things that you need to do to meet some of the requirements in two thousand nine, as, as it relates to storage of property and evidence, as it relates to storage of guns, drugs, and weapons, and jewelry, and that kind of thing. So, it ends up to be a different style of a building. It's very difficult to incorporate that. That was one of the biggest reasons why we elected to pursue the I G A with Alpharetta for property and evidence storage, is it's just next to impossible to build a room in a building like this that would meet any of the requirements for property and evidence storage. And as you can see, and it's unfortunate that a good friend and colleague and our prior city manager here in Milton is down in McDonough, had his evidence room broken into just a little while ago. So, those things do happen. You know, it's, it's one of those things that you just have to be very careful when you build that kind of stuff. That having been said, it, it should be a document that, that doesn't design city hall, it doesn't design offices, it doesn't say the bathroom goes there, the atrium's round or it's square, there's stairs or there's not. It really just takes a square footage that also contemplates circulation space, as well as some of those things that we otherwise wouldn't realize we needed, mechanical rooms, elevators, some of those things that go into a city hall that eat up square footage other than just office space. So, we're going to see a very detailed spreadsheet when we're done. As a matter of fact, I've got about four iterations of it on my desk that actually talk about square footage, and then we're going to see some very nicely done bubble diagrams, for lack of a better term, that kind of space plan and put folks next to each other based on where they're most efficient.
And I guess just a second component to that adjacency question is just when it comes down to the cost, separate from that square footage, obviously looking at either land acquisition or lease, or and/or kind of similar to the library, do you look at existing land, or do you look at acquisition of land? And then if you're looking at different purchases and adjacency, if it's one building versus that plus fire, you obviously get into some cost situations that become additional elements of analysis. So, I just didn't know if this needs analysis in that term of adjacency was going to start, starting to go down that path as well. If not, it's probably something I'm assuming that we're, would be kind of part of our phase one, be.
Right. It's going to go down that road to the extent that they try to use some costly mechanisms to put a cost to the facility itself based on square footage. Understanding that a site has not been selected, it's very difficult to attach cost to a, to a site because we don't know what we have. We don't know what kind of site prep is going to be required, or what type of modification, or grading, or remediation, or all those things that go along with sites until you start to pick where you want and start to gather soil samples, et cetera. So, they are, are doing their best to add some costing mechanisms to the building itself based on a, on a cost per square foot basis. It'll obviously become more and more refined as we, as we do a better job. I didn't know I was going to have the opportunity to talk about cost tonight, but the mayor will probably appreciate this. I am going to share one thing that we learned as we toured at our two city hall facilities, and learned this from the city manager in Swanee, and it just makes sense. The, one of the biggest headaches he had was when he had to answer the question, what's that new city hall cost? Because everybody has their own ideas as to what does that cost mean. Meaning, more specifically, what did the building cost? What did the furniture, fixtures, and equipment cost? What did the land cost? Is the person that's asking what city hall cost asking what the brick and mortar's costing, or are they asking a total project cost? And he said, it, that was one of the big things he learned, was that you had to actually figure out what people were asking when they answered the question about what the city hall costs. So, I say that right at the very outset of this, that when we start to talk about cost, we always want to make sure that we're on the same page, knowing what does that cost mean. You know, they dumped a half million dollars out of their general fund into the construction of a city hall, and then they went and passed bonds and borrowed less money than the total project cost for the city hall, because they supplemented it with some money out of the general fund. So, when they went and borrowed six and a half million dollars in bonds, and then his project came in at seven point one million dollars, everybody thought he was six hundred thousand dollars over budget, when in fact, the passing of a bond or that amount of money wasn't the project cost they had supplemented from the general fund. So, you can see how convoluted costing can get when we work, work through this process. So, I just want, anytime we start to talk about cost, let's all make sure we're talking about the same cost.
And I think your point was well-taken. It's land, it's building, it's furniture and fixtures, so even if there's three components, and we start to really assess that, you know, we've got some places, we already own the land. If we're not going to do that, obviously, we have an incremental cost for the land acquisition, but thank you.
And I'd just like to add, too, it's fairly interesting, and, and our consultant has certainly done a lot of work for us. I think we've got a lot of bang for the bucks. Chris has done a lot of work, spent a lot of time, and what's, what's kind of interesting, you would think that it's, would be fairly straightforward, and a, an architect or a planner could just punch in a city hall, so, you know, such and such sized city, and have kind of a general plan or whatnot. But everybody you talked to had gone before them and talked to other cities, so you'd think there would be a trend, but when you walk in, every city hall was different, and totally different, and had a whole different, you know, way they did things. So, it's, it's a very, it's, it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of discussion to, it's not a cookie cutter thing like, like you might think, so. Are there any other questions for Chris on this? Okay?
Couple, couple more things, Mayor, just real quick. One, I want to let you know we're kicking off the, we have kicked off, it's really gotten into full gear this week, the preparations for our fiscal year ten budget. Stacy and I met today to discuss revenues as well as some just preliminary stuff. We'll be meeting with department heads over the next three days. Every department head, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of this week, and then we will be working again, Stacy and I, on, on Friday to kind of tie up the, the loose ends. I'll have more information on that as, as we work through the process, but I want you to know that if you, if you're wondering what's going on at city hall, it's pretty good to say at this point, budget, and you probably have hit the nail on the head. I want to let you know that we've, you've, you've seen in your email, and I, I want you to know that our discussions with C H Twoam Hill are ongoing, although I see a point that those discussions will come to us being ready to bring something forward to each of you. The mayor's very involved in, in, in that process. He and I together, representing the city, and I fully intend that in the next two weeks, we will hope to be meeting with each council member to deliver a, to deliver what we've discovered through this, through this process. It's way more involved than I can even imagine getting into tonight. We could, we could turn this meeting into a midnight, or if we wanted to. But just know that that is top of mind, and that it is something that the mayor and I will be bringing forward to you here shortly. The last one is just a matter of policy. I, I want to let you know that our, we have had one emergency purchase in the last week or so. We had a transmission go out in one of our police cars that needed to be fixed to keep it on the street, and we elected to use the Ford dealership to do that emergency repair, because we got a hundred thousand mile warranty on the new transmission, which we otherwise wouldn't have had if we had used another vendor. The, the repair was right at twenty-three hundred dollars, and that may seem not even material to you, although our purchasing policy requires that anytime we make an emergency purchase, we notify the mayor and council. So, that's, that's the notification on that. Mayor, that's all I have.
Anything else from staff? Not, I'm going to conclude this meeting. Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Just a second. Councilmember Thurman, motion on second, but councilmember Hewitt, that we adjourn this meeting.
Hall is in favor of the motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Et unanimous. Meeting adjourned seven oh four.